Okay, good evening, welcome to the March 17th Village of Tuckahoe Planning Board Meeting. Nancy, please take attendance.
Commissioner Naronberg?
Present.
Commissioner Caramella?
Present.
Commissioner Gorman?
Present.
Commissioner Caliano?
Here.
Chairman Leo?
Here. Can I have the motion to approve the meeting minutes which were held on December 16th?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we start this evening, I'd just like to apologize to the public and to the applicants. I know we have been away for the last two months, but unfortunately several of our members had family emergencies, illnesses, and other commitments, so, and that's why we didn't have the last two Planning Board meetings. So I kind of apologize for that, but we're all here this evening, and hopefully we can resolve a lot of these issues this evening. So as of that, I would like to bring up 125 Marbledale Road, please. Now just tell us your name, tell us about your project, and...
My name is Rich Kurzberg, and Rich Kurzberg. I presently have a business at 134 Marbledale Road. It's a tool business, distribution, and we're looking to rent the space from across the street at 125 Marbledale Road.
Okay, and that's for storage...
For storage of our product.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on this application?
I just have a quick one. How does the storage that you're proposing differ from the storage you have now?
I just need more. We're growing.
Okay, so it's the same item, same stuff?
Same item, same stuff, just hand tools, like pliers, screwdrivers, compression tools.
Okay.
Specialty hand tools. And we've been here for, since the early 70s.
Alright, thank you.
So just basically your business is expanding, you just need additional storage?
Expanding, and we need additional storage.
Right, okay. Gary, do we have that motion? I'm sorry? Oh, okay. Alright, thank you. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here this evening to speak on this application? Since I see no one here to speak on this application, I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'd like to make a resolution. Let's see. Based on this application submitted to the Planning Board, finds and determines that, one, action taken herein is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of the seeker and its implementing regulations. The Planning Board is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed site plan application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action. Okay, the following is a resolution decision of the Planning Board of the Village of Tuckahoe on today's date. Can I have a second, please?
A second?
Nancy, please take a vote.
Yes, Commissioner Naronberg?
Four.
Commissioner Caramella?
Four.
Commissioner Caliano?
Four.
Commissioner Gorman?
Four.
Chairman Leo?
Four. So you're approved, congratulations, and continue to grow in the village.
Thank you.
Okay. Gary, this is for you?
Yes.
Okay. The next application is 185 Marbledale Road, please. Leonard?
181?
181, or are you wrong?
185.
It says on the agenda 185, I think it was corrected today, to show 181. It is 181.
Oh, I apologize then.
It was, yeah, it was a mistake on the agenda, but I think that was corrected today by the Building Department.
Good evening, I'm Leonard Brandis. I'm the architect for Rocco Caracciola, who has previously received approval for doing a car wash and repair shop in this location. The previous approval, when they tried to actually go to build it, was extremely overpriced. He could not afford to do it with all the changes that was done on it, the things that he had wanted, but didn't realize the costs were going to be involved. We've reduced this project. The original one had a store, a variety store in the front of it. Now it's just going to be the car wash and the auto repair shop. So, the existing building... I have some photographs of the existing space. The existing building is next to the brewery, and now there's a Hertz rental car over here, so it's in between the two of them right now. And what we're planning on doing is cutting the front of the building back, so car wash people can exit easily over here without going into the street, so there's room for at least two cars minimum over there. And we're going to hopefully improve the look of the neighborhood. The brewery has made some nice changes. Have across the street, which right now is mostly, it's an auto upholstery place across the street with mostly an empty lot next to it. They do use that for parking, but it is mostly vacant. The back of our lot is all empty right now, and goes down into the ground. We are going to be leveling out the back of this area. So that is still going to be happening, we are going to be building on piles in order to raise this building up and raise the land up. We worked out systems that we had before for supporting the water systems in here, for catching, or their drainage, recycling the water from the rainfall, so we can use it for the car wash itself, and continue to use that way. What we are trying to do, I guess I have the black and white that you have over here, basically we're just trying to create a simple building. I did do a project down the block, Fleetwood Collision, which has similar materials and colors that they want to use, so I want to match in with that. And did a few renderings to give you more of an idea of what we're talking about. So here's the building set back within the space, doing some plantings alongside, so we are trying to create little green areas here. I have a planting plan to submit to you.
We could definitely share.
It will be visible from the back, thank you. So we did want to have that. We do want to have some tall tree areas over here, working with, we have a pear tree, and we have some plum trees over here, so we have a nice arrangement here, so just create a little bit more than just driving into a parking lot, which is where we were the last time, actually. So this does create a nicer atmosphere, putting plantings here. We have a vacuum area over here in the back corner over here for the cars to vacuum. That leaves us excess, so people can go in both directions over here, since there is only one driveway going in and out over here. So we do realize that that is a limitation, but the building is right here on the neighborhood, and we don't have any more land to work with on this. So we do have it, but it has been accepted previously to be used for that same driveway for being used for this purpose. The previous purpose had multi-level parking lot in the back. That is all gone. There's no reason for all the parking and the cost. And I do have... I only have one unfortunately. This is, we do have a light fixture for outside, the lighting on the building, you can see that in your elevation on the second page of your sheet I handed to you, which has the colors listed. See the lamp fixtures that we had put in here? So that's also on our rendering over here. I could pass the rendering around also, I think that might be easy for you guys to see close up. Didn't get a chance to get to the printer to make them bigger. I was only able to get small samples of the color, unfortunately.
Which is grout.
Well, they do these samples of that. They're using the same materials for the Lehigh concrete.
Leonard, are you demolishing half of the building?
We are demolishing up, there are, the building itself exists to this point right now.
Right.
And we are demolishing the front half. There are piers over here with beams going across, so we're just taking it to the next pier level is what we're doing.
Okay.
So we are trying to save as much as we can. We're not making the building any wider over here, but we are creating a new entry over here for his service area. The usual route would be that, and this is what happens most of the time now, is that people will pull up in front of the shop, where in this case now we added two parking spaces, a handicap and a regular parking space in the front, where his customers can come in, he'll take the car and bring it around, and then he'll bring it back out to them, which is what he does now, even now with the surface entrance in the front, he still gets all the cars, people just drop the cars in the front.
So Len, can you just walk us through the site? Explain to us as a car wash customer, and if you're a mechanic customer, what's the process? Because again, one of the things we discussed is the narrow driveway and the possible conflict of people, for example, that could become a bottleneck.
Yes.
So how are you going to resolve that?
Well, right now, by having all the people that come in for the mechanical, to get any mechanical work, will not bring their cars in the back. That'll all be done by...
How would I know that? If I'm a customer for the first time, right, and I'm going to visit the shop, how do I know not to go directly into the property?
I think the front entry is pretty much Rocco's service center that you would be pulling in over here. This is a pretty inviting entrance now. It's not looking like a garage, but it just looks like a place that you are supposed to bring your car to. This is where it is, and that's where there's parking in front of it. I think that helps on the, if you look at the elevation, the aerial view, it shows it pretty clear that that's a place to go.
Yeah, I typically have...
I can put notes.
I associate, when I go to run a mechanic, my mechanic is typically not in a beautiful building like this one, don't get me wrong, you know, so again, I'm talking about the, for the first time, when someone brings a car to Rocco and doesn't know the system yet, you're kind of lost a little bit, and you want to figure out, hey...
I think most people, I understand what you're saying, but most people, when they bring their cars, how many people here would drive your car right into your mechanic's garage? You don't. It's a rare occasion.
I'd bring it to the driveway.
You'd bring it to the driveway, but you don't bring it...
Which is right in front of the doorway.
Well, in this case, the driveway is still in front of the doorway, and then he would be taking the car. His customers now, and there's been even...
Can you take the microphone, please? Tell us your name, please.
Rocco Caracciola. I own Rocco's Service Center on Marbledale Road. The car wash is going to have two people working at it.
Okay.
One person's going to get him on to the tracks.
Which is in the back.
In the back. And there's going to be one person in the front of the building to tell people what to do, and to help them also to get off the track.
So full-time, you're going to have two people?
Exactly.
One will be in the front?
Exactly.
And directing traffic at the driveway?
Yep.
And the other person will be in the back, making sure people make the track?
Exactly.
Okay. And what are the odds of operation for the car wash?
Eight to 10.
So eight in the morning to 10 in the evening, so you're going to have two...
Two shifts.
Two shifts. Okay.
One note I'd also like to make, that we actually, from the last car wash that you had approved, this is a longer car wash, because we added additional blowers in the front, so there will be nobody drying, the cars will be fully dried, so there's nobody outside drying the cars off at that point. This is a straight through, you drive through, and when you come out, the car is dry, nobody has to be out there. So it's not a smaller car wash where you always have people outside drying the cars off. And that we don't, because we don't want, we don't have room, we only have room for a couple of cars, we don't want to be blocking up Marbledale Road. So the car wash itself, we'll have a sign for the entry over here, that you come around and go directly in, and there will be somebody helping you go into that car wash. Yes, sir.
Eric, you need a microphone?
From one end of where it starts on Marbledale to the other side, it's about 60 feet of curb cut, is that correct?
Yes.
I mean, my issue is that we're trying to encourage a more 75 feet of curb cut, continuous, so my issue is that we're trying to encourage, you know, the ability to walk on Marbledale sidewalks, and there's a lot more activity, there's various educational, schools, recreation, now, you know, the brewery and so forth, and this cuts a huge swath. I understand you need certain ingress and egress, and you have the parking right in front, that's another 30 or 40 feet. Is there any way, and I hope there is, a way to minimize, or at least to get back some of the continuous sidewalk and eliminate some of the curb cut?
Please, we'll be back actually. The sidewalk is over here in front, so we're not breaking the sidewalk over there.
No, you're breaking the entire sidewalk for 75 feet.
Well, the curb is existing right now, pretty much as is. We already have, but it's the guard base are right now, it's just in front of the building, there's all garage cuts over here.
Right.
Here, here, and it is already a driveway over here, so it's just a driveway. We're not really adding much in terms of curb cut, and we're probably adding about 8 feet of curb cut over here.
There's basically no, there's no sidewalk, though, right? You're walking 75 feet in front of where cars are going to be coming in and out, right? There's one parking spot, cars are going to be coming in and out, backing in. There's another one, that's another 10 feet that people are going to be coming in and out. There's the exit where people are going to be coming out. There's the entrance, and then you have the exit, so then you add that all up, there's that 75 feet of, you know, people having to dodge, at just a little bit at odds with what we've been talking about in terms of our vision for Marbledale. Not to say that this doesn't work, but if we could try to figure out a way, at least on the, where the parking is, to try to minimize the amount of back in.
And we can reduce the pocket in the front over here, if that works to you, but I think that was the idea, is to get people off of the traffic on Marbledale Road, it's a very crowded road.
No, I know, but the idea is also to continue the pedestrian traffic from, you know, on Marbledale, so as Mr. Fang is saying, is that it's very important to continue the sidewalk. So where are the sidewalks located? Can you mark on that plan?
The sidewalks are the closest part down here.
I think the next time that you come, the plan needs to show the sidewalk, so we can understand that.
Yeah, that'd be good.
It would just help us understand it.
Yeah, if you could actually place it on the site plan, the entire, I know you have a kind of a generic site plan, but just so we understand what the project looks like on a streetscape? Alright, that would be wonderful. And can you tell us about the actual car wash itself? What, you know, who the manufacturer the car wash is, how does it work, where are you getting the water from, is it recycled, or is it the...
Manufacturer is McNeil.
McNeil?
They make it. Just going to have three tanks in the ground for recycle water. It holds 10,000 gallons of water. The machinery inside does all the work.
So where are the tanks going to be located? I'm not sure. You're showing these on the plans, Len? They're very large tanks, so...
They're going to be in the... We can, I will show them, I'll put them on the plan, wait, we were...
Get the microphone, please? Do we have another microphone?
No. Take one of his, you can use his.
The tanks are going to go on the ground over here in the parking lot, so basically all the tanks would be three tanks, and then it gets plumbed into the building, and then also I'm going to have the roof water come into the tanks, also plumbed in, and then the excess goes out.
You bring up the roof. In your previous application, you had a green roof. Is that what you're still going to be doing on this project?
No.
No. And the reason?
Can't afford it.
Is that expensive?
Yeah.
How much would it add to the project? Do you have a number?
Yeah, it's over 150,000.
Just for the green roof portion?
But the support, everything, yes.
On the, on the tank, so that 10,000 gallons total, or 10,000 apiece?
Oh, total.
And the water's recycled?
Yes. The first tank, all the water goes into, and then the sediment goes down, and there's a baffle inside the tank, about four feet up, and that water goes into the next tank, and then the sediment in that tank goes to the ground, and the four feet up, and the last tank is purified water, goes through a filter system.
Is that, are those, is there a space, is there a void under the ground now that's being occupied by current tanks, that you are simply replacing tanks, or are you going to be digging a new space?
Digging a new space. There's no tanks there now.
Alright, and this is the part of your property that was subjected to testing in the last application, and came back in an acceptable...
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and it hasn't been disturbed since then?
Exactly.
Or played with, or whatever?
Nope.
Okay. I have a question. Your architect, Mr. Brandis, indicated that you're going to be adding feet, you're going to be putting in fill to raise the building?
In the back. There's going to be a retaining wall here?
Oh, back there?
Yeah.
Not the front of the building?
No, no. No, and the front stays the same.
Okay, so, because I was going to say, how many feet are you adding, but, then I, who'll care for the landscaping? Who's going to maintain that?
I am.
Alright. And can you describe the garage entry door? I believe your architect probably would be doing that. It looks like it's wood with glass panes, but that's only from a drawing, I don't know.
No, it's fiberglass. Fiberglass for the glass door. It's insulated door.
With glass panes?
Yes.
Across the center?
Yes.
Dividing it. Okay, that's...
Mind, that door is only open when it's, is only down when it's closed, because it is open all the time during the car wash, when the car wash is open.
Mm-hmm.
That door's open.
Okay. That's what I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Oh, yes, please.
Yes. I'd like to say to the board and to the applicant, because your underground storage has changed, therefore, there's been changes to your runoff, to your storm collection, and now your roof, which was green, is now going to be giving off more water. The flow that's going into the county storm drainage system needs to be recalculated and verified by Dolph Rothfeld, the city, the village's engineer. So that needs to be resubmitted and checked out to make sure it still fits the criteria that was approved in the original plans.
No, but I guess...
What Rocco said is, is an overflow bill. And you did say that, right?
The overflow recycles, when we catch, we have another, we have the basins over here, there'll be tanks over here that will catch that water and then bring it to the other tanks.
So the entire site is contained?
We are trying to...
There is no runoff?
Correct.
Okay. When I heard overflow, that's when I got concerned.
But that fills, that it overflows into those tanks, so those get recycled, so that's how it gets...
Alright, nothing goes off-site, basically.
It's not always, it's not always going to be filled up, that's the problem.
No, I understand. Okay.
The previous application, your calculations was done on having a green roof. That green roof absorbs a great deal of water. Now that you have a hard roof, where the amount of water is going to increase dramatically, so I guess to your question is, where's that water going? And I'm not sure if that additional calculation has been done, has it?
Yes.
So you have a copy of it?
Dolph Rothfeld has it.
Okay, for the record, for the record, I know that Bill's answer is, it can't be recorded by these microphones, so either give him a microphone, or somebody summarize what he just said, who does have a microphone. We have a stenographer who may rely on it.
All this stuff went to Dolph's office for review.
And?
And it's 100% recycled, there's no more that will be going off-site, other than the used water through the sanitary sewer.
Okay, is that, is that the complete answer?
That answers my question about stormwater runoff. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, should we open a public hearing now, or wait till next month?
I guess we can see if anyone's here from...
Okay. I make a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Is anyone here this evening to speak on this application?
Just Gary.
Okay, so at this point, I make a motion to carry the public hearing until next month. Second, have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so Len, I guess we'll see you next month? Okay, and just provide us the information? Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll save this for next month.
Do we need, do we need this back? Glenn? Thank you, and this is yours. One and nine Marbledale Road, please?
Is there a way of getting my laptop hooked up?
Yes, there is a, should be a cable there someplace.
Is this the last?
That's for last, as they say.
Sir? Okay. I'm just waiting to see. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So again, before we start, I just want to make sure, I know there's a lot of people here for this project, I just want to make sure everyone understands, this is an informational purposes application. The application has not been finalized, so it's not a formal application yet, so you're going to make a presentation. I will allow some of the public to come up and speak on the subject, but again, I just want to remind everybody, this is an informal application at this time.
Thank you. I'm Vincent Malusi from the firm of Washauer, Malusi-Washauer Architects, where the architectural firm for the project. Along with me are several of the consultants for the team. Just to kind of go back, with the last meeting December 16th, we presented some, presented the project, there were some comments, we made some revisions, they were resubmitted, so we're here tonight just to update you on what those revisions were.
Okay.
Alright. I'll start with, this is our site plan. One of the first things we did is, on the south end of the property, we closed up, previously there was another driveway here, we closed that up, and just kept one driveway along into the site over at this end. We would, we're also proposing to have a restriction of deliveries made by 30-foot trucks, nothing larger than that. We also removed the sidewalk along the parking lot here, and behind, and behind the hotel here. We increased landscaping throughout the site, along here, here, along the back property line here, along here. We're also showing, in this area, this is where 20 cars will be, there'll be landscape, but if the need is for them to be reactivated at some point, those will be shown there. We're also showing, restoring the sidewalk and some street trees in front of the restaurant and in front of the hotel property along here. And then we did a redesign on the hotel, I believe my partner...
You mean the restaurant?
Restaurant, I'm sorry, yes. And this is something, we have to submit this to you, but this was something that was informally presented, and, let's see, this is, let me just show you the plan. And there's no specific restaurant group that has it, so this is just our thoughts of what it might be. Comes in off the side, dining area, a little outdoor patio area. The street elevation is this east elevation, this would be off the patio. Our materials are a EPIS material on the lower end, and some sort of vertical metal siding with some heavy metal band trim on the top. And over here, we would propose to do some fabric awnings over the patio area, and just some accents along the side. This is just some of the other elevations that we have. And again, this will be submitted... And again, this will be submitted to you formally. So now I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Tony Castillo from, uh, SESI Engineering to go-
So before you leave, so those are the only changes that have occurred since we last met, correct?
Correct.
So it's basically been landscaping and, uh, kind of the, uh, some additional, uh, the addition of some sidewalks, and also the kind of redesign of the, um, um, restaurant, correct?
Yeah.
From an architectural perspective?
And the removal of the, the driveway and the sidewalks on, onsite.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, okay, we, I'm sorry. We did send, set the restaurant back further from, from the, the street and allowed more landscape. Tony, let me get your thing up here.
Just as a basic, uh, just a, a basic question, since you don't have a, um, an operator for a restaurant yet, right? Does it really make sense to the kind of design a generic restaurant versus waiting until you have an operator and then design specifically for that, uh, for that restaurateur? Because, you know, what you designed today, for argument's sake, may not work for somebody, let's say, who, who may wanna come in, so, uh, just, just, I'm throwing it out there just as a, as a thought.
You know, basically taking some of the, our experience with restaurants and, and just, you know, people that, we've, we've designed a generic restaurant that might work for somebody. It doesn't have to be a chain, it could be someone local that may, they may make some minor modifications, but we certainly could come back at the point that there is somebody signed up and, and review that, review that at that time.
Yeah, again, the point I'm trying to make is, it just seems like a kind of a, a generic design, per se, right? I mean, for argument's sake, we're trying to change the look and feel of, of Marbledale to something, uh, different than it is today, so for argument's sake, if we get something, someone's looking for a slightly more upscale, let's say, restaurant, I don't, I'm not sure if that's, you know, the, the right design for it, so I guess my, my question is, does it make sense to, to say, okay, this is an area designed for a, a, a restaurant, but, um, perhaps not develop it until, you know, you have a, an end user?
If, if I could tag on in that, cause you, you're actually doing a foundational question for what I was thinking, which was, on the restaurant, you, you, you mentioned metal siding and, and various effects, but my thought was, are those removable pieces such that the actual occupier, purchaser of that property can remove what you build and, and do it up in the way that they wanna do it up, so to speak? Which essentially tracks that, which is, how, how, how solid are you gonna be building those trim, that trimming, et cetera, and design such that, uh, the next occupier, the actual occupier cannot take that down and redo themselves with whatever extra cost that's gonna be?
I, I think at this point, that we're, we're, we're putting forward an idea that a restaurant would go there, and there is a certain design that we'd like to start out with. If, if we get somebody that is very specific and would like to do something different, we would have to then design it to those standards. At this point, we're going forward with this, by time this actually hits the ground, it may be, you know, we may have, uh, a different restaurant to come back to you to look at, it would be something that would be reviewed as an amendment or something down the road. Right now, the client would like to, to propose this as being done, and then find someone that would occupy it as, as we've designed it, and, and that's, that's the reason why, that's all.
I hear what your explanation is, I don't know that you answered my question, which was really, how changeable is what you design gonna be for the next person that occupies it?
I-
Who may not like your design or want your design?
It, it would, it would have to be a renovation, if, if it's built, it would have to be a renovation. The materials are not made to come on and off like-
Yeah, I, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I wouldn't, I would, I could, I don't know that I could design something that would work to that.
Well, that's the point, I mean, uh, the point is, I, doesn't, that's, until you, does it make sense until you get an operator to say, okay, this is a, a space allocated for a restaurant, but not necessarily come up with a generic restaurant that we're not gonna be happy with, or your end user's gonna be happy with, but, you know, just to have a building there and sitting idle for whatever period of time. So again, uh, again, this is not a formal application, and just, this is just up for discussion, and I just wanna make sure you're thinking about that as well, that's all.
Right.
We, I understand the concern, and certainly we could review with the client, you know, your concerns, but I, I, I think that their intent is to try to, try to at least put a placeholder that they, that a restaurant is here, they've designed something, they may get someone to take it as is, and then we'll take the steps when they have someone signed up.
Okay, it's just a discussion at this point, so we can belabor the point afterwards. Take a microphone, Eric, do you have a microphone? Can we, can we give, can we give Eric the microphone?
Well, what we can do in the meantime is just establish certain key principles.
Exactly.
And whatever it is that gets swapped out, um, as long as they abide by that, so it's the placement, the entrance, the orientation,
I agree.
And then, uh, you know, whether the theme is, is one thing or another, the overhang is this length or that length, and i- as long as it sort of goes with the guidance that we provide initially, then, um, you know, your placeholder strategy should be something that's workable, I would think, right?
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Just hold on to it, Eric.
Uh, good evening.
Good evening.
As, uh, after we, uh, past couple of months, we have done a couple of modifications in terms of the grading based on the, the recommendations on the board, and, um, resulting changes to the site plan. I wanna kinda bring, kinda back to focus, starting from the Marriott area, what the result of the site plan changes were. By getting, by eliminating at the southernmost driveway to Marbledale Road, uh, what that allows us, allowed us to do is to do some improvements on the grading, uh, in order, what ended up doing is, allowed us to raise the, the finished floor of the, of the Marriott itself uh, by about three feet. In turn, by doing that, what that allows us to do is to, allows for a couple of additional improvements. Number one, it allows us to reduce the disturbance at the rear of the, uh, of the proposed hotel, uh, to the west of it, in between the rear wall, proposed wall, and a property line as you're starting to climb up the slope.
Before you go, you, you're saying that you raised the first floor three feet, is that what you just said?
Right.
So the, so the entire building went up in elevation, three feet?
That's right.
So what's the new height, just out of curiosity?
The finished floor, I believe-
No, not the finished floor, the finished height of the building.
What was the, uh?
How did you manage that, by raising it three feet, just out of curiosity, how, how did that work out?
Because what happens is, as you, that southern, uh, that southern driveway-
Right.
Uh, required us to, it, it's at a much lower elevation, there's, Marbledale Road is a, as a, as a grade drops down
Right, right.
From north to south.
Yeah.
Um, so what happens is by, by eliminating that southern driveway, that allowed us to, to raise grades in that, in that front area, in front of the Marriott, because otherwise, in order to provide access to that southern driveway, we had to pitch that grade down. Therefore, it, it, we had to look, we had to have that finished floor, that hotel, at a lower elevation to start with, in order to catch, in order to be able to tie those grades down at a reasonable slope to get to that southern driveway. By getting rid of that southern driveway, that allows us to, allowed us to raise that, those elevations a bit.
Raises the whole building?
Turn the mic down.
The finished floor, the-
Raised the whole site, then, right? You raised the whole site, yeah.
Exactly, everything goes up, just a little-
They're gonna burn, basically.
And how does this, how is this?
And how is this in relation to the, the wall behind it? Is it, does it raise it so that it, it's above the wall?
Well, what happens is it allows us to get rid of a couple of things. Before, the, in the prior application, we, in, in the prior version of the site plan, we had a couple of, uh, retaining walls that would've had to be constructed. The first one was, um, why don't you go back to the, to, to the, uh, the grading plan and, and if you can zoom into that area?
I know, perhaps I'm using the wrong word, the hill, I'm talking about the hill behind it.
Right, what we're trying to do is reduce the disturbance in that back area. And by, by eliminating that southern driveway, and thereby raising that finished floor of that, of the hotel, that allowed us to, to reduce the amount of disturbance, again, between that rear wall, that western wall, that, that hotel, and the property line, because that slope back there, there was, the prior application had a, had a, had a, had a, had a, had a wall that was essentially acting as a, as a retaining wall.
Mm-hmm.
We were trying to find a way to get, to minimize that if not-
Is that where you had generators back there?
What's that?
Is that where you had your generators back there, in your previous application?
There was a pool back, there was a pool back there, um, and also there was a sidewalk in that back area as well. The mechanics are back there.
We're back, we're back there.
Right.
Okay.
So by, again, by raising that finished floor of the building, that allowed us to reduce the amount of proposed, uh, of disturbance back there, reducing the amounts of walls.
When you say disturbance, you mean because if there is a slope, that you don't have to begin to even it out and put a retaining wall?
Right.
Okay, my question is, what is the height of the building in relation to the height of that slope or, uh, behind it?
She's asking if, you know, the, the back shelf, you know, we have the, let's say, the little, uh, hill behind the, the property?
Slope.
The slope behind a property, she just wants to know what the, what the height of the slope is versus the height of the building and the relationship between the two.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Yeah, did you just raise the height of the building, I mean, what are we measuring the height of the building from? A newly graded piece of property?
It would be from a, the area around it would be, would be about approximately three feet higher.
If, if I can clarify this, I believe what you're all referring to is the height of the building relative to the center line of the road, which is what code calls for, that's how everything's measured. But I think it would be helpful, uh, to have a section through, uh, Marbledale Road, through the building at its current height, and the slope behind it, and the neighborhood behind it, I think that would clarify what's happened with the changes in the slopes and the grades. It's hard to envision it just by speaking, talking through it with this level of plans.
Right, it's, it's only plans at this point.
Yeah, that's not a problem, absolutely.
Yeah, but what is the height now, based on what you've just told us?
Are you referring to height from a grade elevation, or?
I'm talking about the height that this built, that our zoning code requires, and the height you've just described to us.
You raised the building three feet, so in other words, we, we have a, um, a max height of a building, and all of a sudden, your building, yes, remained the same, but the elevation increased by three feet. That's the issue. We just wanna make sure you're still in, in co-compliant.
If you're measuring from the middle of Marbledale Road, you just raised the building.
I don't think we have your elevations.
Fifty, yeah, it's fifty, it's fifty seven, I believe that would be taken as per the zoning height. We'd have to go, go, double check whether we, you know, where we stand with this.
Right, so I, I think, Mr., I'm sorry, what Mr. Pinto just said, I think ideally, a section through Marbledale, through, to the, to the, uh, through the property, up to the hill, so we can see exactly what the relationship between everything is, and I, and, and get the actual heights, and we just wanna make sure we have the, uh, the require, or you didn't exceed the, the, the maximum.
We can show that, you know, is what's exist, what's exist, the, what this now has is a height relation to the zone, the zoning point at the center of Marbledale.
Okay.
Okay, just for the, just for the record, uh, A four plans that I have, uh, the plans of November twenty-one, and I don't have the current plans with the revised grades, showed a fifty-six foot, three inch, uh, overall building height, although there's an impediment that might even be a little higher at the front entrance, but it doesn't show a relationship to, uh, center of Mar- Marbledale Road, so that has to be studied and, and presented.
The, is there a max height requirement on, uh, by zoning?
There, there was a, um, there's a variance issue.
What is the variance?
So we'll have to make sure there was not a high variance.
It could still be outside the variance now.
Right, we, yeah.
So just, when you come back, just make sure you, you address those issues?
So Mr., once, once you get the plans, and Mr. Wims will, and Mr. Pinto will, uh, will double check that, make sure they're in compliance with that variance they were granted.
Okay, move on.
As far as the, uh, moving to the north towards where the restaurant area is, we really did not modify, make substantive changes to the grading, except to account for the, uh, the changes to the parking layout that, uh, the architect mentioned previously. As far as the stormwater, uh, the stormwater layout, I think there were some, there were some questions at the, the prior meeting where I attended, who wanted some clarification as to what was being proposed there, and I wanted to kinda offer that a little bit.
Please.
Essentially, the, this, the site stormwater system, uh, i- is, is broken up into a number of, uh, underground detention systems. The idea is to capture the run, the rate, the runoff that comes, would come off the property, off these paved surfaces and the roof, roofs, and, um, and basically detain them, slow them down, slow this runoff down, and, uh, and, and slow that rate of runoff down, because the idea is this water would have to be connected, it'd be discharged to a couple of points, a couple of manholes, along an existing, uh, it's a thirty-inch pipe that runs under Marbledale Road. So the, the idea is to, again, break it up into s- into small underground systems that capture this runoff at key, at, at key locations in order to not tax the Marlborough Road system, and make sure that that water's throttled down and, uh, and doesn't create a negative impact onto the Marlborough Road drainage system. There is some offsite runoff that is going to continue to come onto the property, um, and it comes off, right now, it comes onto the property from two locations, one from the west, from the slope coming down to it. And, uh, to capture that, we have another separate system of pipes that will capture that and convey it around, and it would, it, in combination with the outflow from these underground systems, would again discharge into that Marlborough Road system, but the idea is to make sure that we do not tax in any way the, the Marlborough Road system, so everything works together. There's this, the, the second area of offsite runoff is, uh, there's a, uh, this property to the north that runs in a sheet flow fashion down to, uh, to the northern property line, where, where it was in there is a, a number of inlets that would capture that runoff, and, and it's, just as I mentioned before, with the system that would capture the water from the slope, again, there will be another system of pipes that would capture that water, and again, be designed to slow that water down to make sure, again, that we're not taxing Marlborough Road. So that's, uh, the property, the project would be designed in accordance with, uh, with local and, uh, DEC requirements for, uh, in order to gain compliance of the stormwater permit.
I have a question about the runoff, Jim, oh, I'm not on, uh, Jim, um, is this a hundred, this is not a hundred percent retaining? The, the description doesn't sound like it to me.
Basically, Dolph Rothfeld, your consultant, reviews the runoff calculations, which need to be submitted. Also, Westchester County Speedy's permit, uh, needs to be, uh, applied for, which includes zero, zero increase in the rate of runoff, which basically will check and, uh, your calculations and your assumptions as to how you're collecting it, the time that the water takes to fill up the systems and then overflow, that's all part of the calculation to make sure, as was described, that it doesn't overtax or add to the existing collection system in Marbledale Road. But that is yet to be done, and yet to be submitted, I believe, to Westchester County and ordered Dolph Rothfeld, so both entities will need a full set of the current plans when you're ready with the calculations and the applications filled out. So yes.
Thanks.
Before you approve it.
And that's all I have at this point.
Okay, anybody, any, everybody have any questions?
Not right now.
All right, free to go.
Public hearing.
What is that?
The memo I handed out.
Oh, you wanna, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I, well, I wanna-
There's no room.
But I've handed out, and I apologize, uh, I'm not clairvoyant, I dated it two thousand and fourteen, it's two thousand and fifteen, so I apologize for that. It's basically a review of the preliminary plans, uh, that were submitted on eleven twenty-one fourteen, with comments that need to be either considered or, or added in the way of notes and whatnot, and let me just read through those that I have. On drawing DE one, a demolition plan, it speaks to giving the responsibility to the general contractor to determine the ex, full extent of demolition. And what I've added to that note is, uh, if the scope of demolition is increased beyond what has been indicated on the approved plans, all changes must be approved by the building inspector prior to the implementation. Therefore, it's not up to the contractor to just add or increase the scope, uh, it's gotta be at the purview of the building official, which is built in, uh, in this case. So that note needs to be added, this will make the plans obviously more of a useful tool in the field when they are in fact approved. Next item is, on the steep slopes, which was discussed, there are some tree removals shown on the steep slopes. And in my experience, when trees are cut down on a slope, it's recommended that you don't remove the stumps until you absolutely have the retaining systems intact, because that root system actually holds, uh, the slope together, and if you heard about the recent mudslides over in Yonkers, your neighbor, um, that, this certainly could be something that could happen during the time of year when it's saturated, so I would just indicate that it's from a procedural point of view, as trees are taken down, even at the foot of that slope, to install your retaining walls and whatnot, that the stumps be left in, intact or in place. So that, again, is just, um, a clarification, that's gonna make it a, a safer site to, to construct under. Uh, on S one, the site plan, it talks about a proposed dumpster area, and that's fine, but, um, in that dumpster area, we typically ask for in all our projects, a hose bib and a floor drain that is usually connected into the sanitary system. So in hot months in particular, if it gets a little drippy, you can wash it down. On site plan S one A, and the large version of the plan, um, it speaks to the concrete sidewalks, um, that are in the right of way along Marbledale Avenue, Marbledale Road, excuse me, and, uh, those should be a minimum, a minimum of five feet wide, as opposed to four feet, that's our standard, and, um, it, there should be- And it, there should be curbing that will match the stone, because we, the village standards is, is a stone curbing and not a concrete curbing. So that's, that's the reason for that comment. There are some references that are carried over to the new plans, leaving a chain link fence and gate in place, those should just be eliminated, because ultimately that area, as we heard this evening, will be landscaped. That's just housekeeping there. The limits of the work along Marble Dale Road should be indicated, so you know where things start and stop. You've got a business in the middle, whether or not the sidewalk and curbs are interrupted in that section or not, I think that's something that we should look at to make sure that it's, you know, continuous upgrade really to that section of Marble Dale Road. Soil erosion plans really should have construction fencing shown, especially where the entrances are to Marble Dale Road. I didn't know about the elimination of the southern entrance till tonight, so I'd like to see that on a revised set of plans. But we want to make sure that the construction traffic while the buildings are being built is contained to the tracking blankets or the gravel blankets, so that the road doesn't get all muddied up every day and they're constantly sweeping it and cleaning it. And then generally speaking, in the details and notes sections, then they need to provide concrete sidewalk curbing, paving repair thicknesses, those standards are not shown anywhere to know that when they're repairing infrastructure for the village, it's repaired in accordance with our standards. So, you know, those things need to be added to the plans, and as I said earlier, on the stormwater management side, Dolph Rothfeld always does the review for drainage and sewer connections for capacity, so that needs to be done in addition to the Speedy's permit that needs to be filed and approved by Westchester County. And there is one other note, noted somewhere in the environmental report that there's a pool in the building. The pool goes to Westchester County Department of Health for both design approval and final approval and acceptance. So that needs to be a condition in your approval when you get to that stage. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Fang?
Can you run over the parking ratios, the amount supplied, amount required, et cetera?
I'm sorry.
Can you run over the amount of parking provided, amount required for each of the different uses?
Sure. We have two hundred and eight spaces. The hotel requires one hundred and sixty-three, the restaurant forty-five.
Did you explore the shared parking?
We did not.
That's something that was discussed in previous work sessions. It's not something that you had chosen to take up?
I, okay.
I'm going to speak to that when I talk about traffic and parking.
Right. Is there any other, because Matthew, you might as well stay here.
Matthew, you're up.
Yes, you're up, so.
All right.
Do you need me to do anything with this?
I don't need any. Okay. Just get this on. Good evening, going back to the December.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry, Matt Carmody from VHB Engineering. Going back to the December meeting where I presented the results of the initial traffic study, there were two comments from the board that I wanted to address now, because I have the answers. One question was, what are the peak hours of operation of the hotel and the restaurant compared to the background traffic that we measured on the roads? So in the AM, they overlap, the peak hour for background traffic is eight to nine AM on a typical weekday morning. The restaurant's morning peak hour is also eight to nine, and the hotel's peak in the AM is eight to nine. In the PM, the background traffic peaks from five to six PM. The hotel peaks from five to six PM, and the restaurant peaks from seven to eight PM. As I said in December, we overlapped the highest peak hours and analyzed them to be conservative, as if they could all happen at the same time. But essentially, the hotel combined peak with the restaurant is seven to eight PM, and the background commuter traffic peak hour is five to six. The other question was, could we add the Columbus Avenue Depot Square intersection to the traffic study? So we did, I'll get to that. And since then, the village consultant, BFJ, has given us comments that I'm going to respond to tonight that resulted in an amended, an addendum traffic study and a response to comments that we're working on now. What are the com-
Have you submitted that revised traffic study?
Yeah, the addendum was submitted in January, and then there was a subsequent round of comments on that that we're responding to now.
I don't remember seeing it, I'm sorry.
We received it at the January meeting by hand, right, Rocco?
Yeah. Can we get another copy? I'm sorry, I just don't think I have it.
Yeah.
You don't have to give it, you can give it to us at the next workshop, I'd just like to see it.
Yep, and we're going to have that response to comments before the next meeting.
Okay.
So that'll have the comments also. In the two rounds of comments, I'm going to address them jointly. It was asked that we analyze a Saturday peak hour. The Saturday peak hour for the hotel and restaurant combined is later, it's eight to nine PM. The background peak hour for traffic is twelve to one PM. In that twelve to one PM peak hour, the hotel and restaurant together are generating about half of the traffic that they would during the PM peak hour. We analyzed those traffic conditions at the original intersections, not including Depot Square and Columbus Avenue, and we did not have a significant impact.
Not including Depot Square?
Right, I'll get to that.
Okay.
That's a whole other animal.
Yeah.
So the Saturday peak volumes are lower in the middle of the day for the restaurant and the hotel, even though that's when the highest background peak hour is for travel, you know, because we're out shopping and everything, twelve to one on a Saturday. Still saving the Depot Square and Columbus Avenue intersection for last, we were asked to revise our shared parking analysis. Originally, the consultant asked that we include ninety percent occupancy for the hotel, which is how we base the traffic volumes that are generated by it. So at ninety percent occupancy, the hotel and the restaurant, you know, doing good business, we looked at the shared parking under what are called eighty-fifth percentile conditions. If you think about average, average is fifty percent, so eighty-fifth percentile assumes above-average conditions. So when overlapping the shared parking of both of those at eighty-fifth percentile, we saw, saw that there was a need for around two hundred and ten spaces. Subsequent to that, planning board and the village consultant said, that's too much parking, so the village consultant asked us to revise our shared parking analysis to fiftieth percentile. So looking at the hotel being ninety percent occupied, but then average conditions for parking for the hotel and restaurant, and that's where we got to the approximately one hundred and eighty to one hundred and ninety spaces that is demanded. So that's aside from zoning, that's actually less than zoning calls for, I believe, but we went through the exercise at the village consultant's request to have a lower parking demand for shared parking. And the last comment that the village consultant gave us on that is that one hundred and eighty spaces could be provided, but fifteen of them should be land banked. I don't know if the planning board agrees with that, or if my client agrees with that, I'm just stating what their comment was, so that there would be one hundred and sixty-five spaces striped and fifteen land banked, so that one hundred and eighty could be provided, which doesn't mean zoning.
But your colleague mentioned, I believe, two hundred and eight, I believe, Mr. Malusi, did I hear you correctly?
That's, that was in the original drawings, so.
Okay, so we're, are we working off of one eighty to one ninety now?
That's just what the parking demand is showing.
Okay.
We haven't committed to that yet.
Okay, thank you.
So just to be clear, what does zoning require you to have?
I think that's where the two hundred and eight comes from.
Two oh eight?
Yeah.
So right now, we're at one eighty?
No, we're at two hundred and eight.
There is no zoning requirement for parking, so it's strictly up to the planning board.
So they left it up to us?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thanks.
The percentiles that were assumed, does that account for the overlap between the hotel and restaurant use? So the hotel presumably is there, or excuse me, the restaurant presumably is there to serve the patrons of the hotel, and so a certain percentage of the hotel, or excuse me, the restaurant patrons would be coming from the hotel, they'd be walking across the parking lot.
Yeah, we assumed that there would be, it's called an internal linked trip credit of ten percent, so that ten percent of the people destined to the restaurant would be hotel guests.
Just, just ten percent?
Yeah, and, and at the December meeting, I explained that in terms of traffic analysis purposes, we want to assume a low percent, so that we don't underestimate the traffic coming to the site. We don't know, this restaurant may not really appeal to the hotel guests in some way, so we could have more traffic coming there, so we don't want to underestimate it by saying fifty percent of the restaurant comes from the hotel, you know? Likewise, we don't want to underestimate the parking demand.
And then the other thing was, is there any taking into account of transit usage? And in the initial presentation at the work session, there's much made about this being a very viable location for the hotel because of the presence of the train station, a lot of people would be attracted by this location, because they may be doing business or tourism or whatever in the city, and there'd be even provision for shuttle, and so you can talk about that a little bit.
It is a ten-minute walk to the Crestwood Station, but again, to be conservative, we haven't assumed any credit for that, because we don't want to think that ninety-five percent of the people or ninety percent of the people are going to be driving there and it ends up being a hundred percent. So, you know, we will encourage that. I believe at the December meeting, or perhaps at the workshop, the shuttle was discussed running to the station, but I, I don't recall the headways or the details on that, or whether it was definitely a commitment or not.
Could that be fleshed out in future presentations?
Yeah.
And, you know, I'd suggest that we've used this pathway, the, the land banked solution, I think in previous projects, I think it, it's yet to be proven out, but I think the intent, just to remind myself and, and all of my colleagues, is that the site plan has this kind of overwhelming dominance of asphalt. And number one, it's just, it's, it's not great on the eyes, and number two, it, you know, it warms everything up, they call that the heat island effect. Number three is, we're trying to minimize the, the impact, the runoff impact on Marble Dale, as the previous speaker said. So all of those take into account, we want to try to get the parking to as, as minimal as possible while making sure that we're not going to flood the street with parking as well. So I think that the solution of trying to get the right balance while making sure that you have the room, should you need it eventually, for the parking, you know, is probably a good solution, once we find that balance, somewhere less than two hundred and eight, more than one hundred and fifty, it seems to me, so.
So the Columbus Avenue Depot Square and Lake Street combination of traffic signals, we extended the traffic that is generated by the project down that way. Not as much of the traffic to and from the site is going that way, on each approach, twenty to forty vehicles per hour. Because those approaches are all congested now, we would have a small impact at those intersections, but it is mitigatable by a traffic signal timing shift. We were then asked by the village consultant, completely apart from the traffic mitigation of the signal timing shift, to look at phasing the traffic signal differently. Right now, it's a very long cycle length, which is the amount of time that you wait from one green to the next on one approach. We measured one of the cycle lengths at one hundred and seventy-three seconds, which is close to three minutes. There's also a dedicated twenty-six second all pedestrian phase, so the village consultant asked us to look at making the signals more efficient, which we did as a courtesy, it's not because we have an impact there, we're able to mitigate the impact by a small signal timing change. We were able to find efficiencies in the traffic signal timing and phasing. By eliminating the all pedestrian phase, we're able to bring that signal timing into the vehicle traffic phasing. We were able to maintain some all pedestrian phasing in the form of what's called a lead pedestrian interval, that is where, when you're waiting on a corner, you see the walk signal and you start walking. By putting in a four-second lead pedestrian interval, you're able to walk four seconds out into the intersection before the opposing traffic that turns across the crosswalk gets a green, okay? So the pedestrians under this proposed signal phasing and timing change would still have some dedicated all pedestrian phasing, but it would be in the form of a lead pedestrian interval, which is actually one of the Federal Highway Administration's recommended proven safety countermeasures, because it doesn't take that much time away from the vehicles and it does allow the pedestrians to get out into the crosswalk where they can be more visible to turning vehicles.
What does that reduce the, the cycle by, by doing that?
We, we moved down to a two-minute cycle length, one hundred and twenty seconds.
So we take about sixty, fifty, sixty minutes out of the cycle?
Yeah, that doesn't translate to a fifty or sixty second reduction in delay for you, I'm sorry, but it does cut down the amount of time that pedestrians would have to wait. If you imagine your pedestrian waiting on the all pedestrian phase, you know, you could be waiting there three minutes. That's why you see a lot of people cutting mid-block, you know, cutting across the street, because they don't want to wait three minutes. So we think this would be a benefit to the pedestrians. We'd also recommend that the village look at some curb extensions to shorten the crossing distances. Right now, there are some very wide radius curbs that could be brought out into curb extensions to shorten the crossing distance, that would help pedestrians even more. But by just looking at the signal phasing and timing changes, which are very inexpensive, we would be able to not only mitigate the impacts of this project, but also bring down the delays to vehicles in the AM and the midday, I, I'm sorry, in the AM and the PM and the Saturday.
And this would be which intersections again?
This is Columbus Avenue Depot Square at Main, Main, and Lake Street at Main.
But can you indicate on a diagram or a map where those curb extensions may be and just bring it along to the next meeting, because we want to share that with the trustees, because we want them to look at that closer, it would help the pedestrian movement and safety.
We've actually drawn those out in our response to comments.
Be helpful, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think that there were a few other technical comments from the village consultant that we were responding to, they're very nitty-gritty about, you know, left turn factors and that kind of thing, so I'm going to skip over those. But those are the changes based on the comments from the planning board and the village consultant from the traffic study.
And because you changed the driveway inside the, the, the property, have you done the radius turns and truck radiuses for that area? Was that all, all studied?
Yes.
In and out, ingress, the fire department, all that, has all that been done?
We've done, we have, we haven't indicated on a drawing, but we can do that.
Okay, I just want to make sure that, you know, if there's ever a fire, that our fire truck can get on the property and, you know, provide the support, so I just want to make sure that.
I know we studied it, we, we didn't put that information on a drawing, but we can provide it.
Yeah, I'd just like to see it. At least we can give it to DBW and Fire Department. Anybody have any questions? Okay, anybody else?
I'd like Bill Canavan from Hydro Environmental Solutions just to come up and give us an update. Hi, everyone, my name's Bill Canavan, I'm with Hydro Environmental Solutions, I'm a hydrogeologist, and we're the group responsible for taking this through the brownfield process with the DEC and the New York State Department of Health. Since the sixteenth, our last meeting, I'll take you through what we've completed so far. As you recall, the site was brought into the brownfield program based on phase one and two site, environmental site assessments. The application was filled out and was accepted in, and we compiled a remedial investigation work plan. That work plan was placed at the library, and then there was a one-month public comment period that got extended by a month. Once that expired, I believe there were some public comments that the DEC answered, and then the investigation was started on, on February twenty-fifth. To date, we've been out there nine field days, we've completed ten borings, four wells, and we still have approximately another month of field work based, depending on the weather. and we still have approximately another month of field work, depending on the weather. As you'll recall, well, if you've been by the site, you know the village has piled up a bunch of snow that they've removed and are storing there. And at present, that snow pile's in the way of three borings and two wells that we intend on installing. And then once the snow's gone, we have an additional, ten surface soil samples we're going to collect across the site and twelve vapor points, shallow vapor points, which we're going to install with a small drill rig. And then we would need to conduct the soil analysis on those borings I just mentioned, and then the vapor point analysis. And then we collect multiple rounds of groundwater levels and sample the wells minimum of two times. So conservatively, that's a month, month and a half of field work if the weather cooperates. I think that, oh, and then during that, during all that investigatory work, the nine field days, the community air monitoring plan was implemented. And that consisted of four air monitoring stations for fugitive dust and volatile organic compounds or gas in the air. There were, there was an up gradient or an upwind station, a downwind, two downwind stations. And then, as per the D C and D O H's request, one stationed by the buildings on the, I think that's the eastern side of the site. Then I think, one other thing I was going to inform the board of. Oh, at the drill rig, we had photoionization detector, a gas meter to monitor for vapors, and a four gas meter, which we may have discussed last time, which was a health and safety meter for lower explosive limit and percent oxygen, things like that. So that's where we're at. I remember, the last time we were here, we didn't reach a quorum, but someone requested signs. If anybody's been by there, we put up the signs. So there's no problem, there's four signs up. And, you know, then after all this field work's done, it's probably going to take us three to four or five weeks to put the remedial investigation report together, which is a comprehensive report which summarizes all the findings that we, and all the data we collected for the mediums we're investigating, which is again, the soil, the groundwater and the soil vapor. And then based on those findings, we will refer back to the proposed design or a site plan in terms of stormwater, the hotel and the restaurant. And then our group will come up with a remedial action work plan. That's going to be a document the size of two Westchester County phone books. It's going to go to the D C and the Department of Health. It will also go to the public record here in Tocco, the village library. That'll be reviewed in com, well, after it's approved, I'm sorry, let me step back a second. After the Department of Health and the D C review it and it's approved, it will then go for public comment for another month. And then that plan will be implemented to start mitigating the site to allow eventually some type of development that the board and the village approves. So that's where we're at. I would say we're probably thirty, thirty-five percent through the brownfield process so far. Based on our, at the end of that field work, that's about where we'll be. Okay, and so that's, that's an update since the sixteenth. We'll pro, Rachel, do we have a date for the next drilling? So within the next two weeks, we'll be out there. We're hoping that the snow pile's gone and the snowpack across the site is gone. And then we'll be out there for roughly another month with the vapor points and the rest of the borings and the wells.
When you say month, is it continuous month? You'll be the every day for a month?
No, probably not. But it's going to be four to six weeks of, you know, we might, we might schedule the vapor points and then have to postpone a day because we have torrential range or something like that.
But it's contiguous, it's not?
Yeah, well, it'll be, it'll be, once that snowpack's gone, we'll work in earnest to complete the remainder of the field work. And if it all goes well, it'll be about four or five weeks.
Let me ask you a question, since you've done, you said, ten, four wells and ten borings, right? Have you had any issues? Have any monitors gone off or any, anything that has been of any concern?
The monitor, the air monitor went off twice. Once when the drillers started to drill rig right next to the air monitor. And that'll, that's, that'll, we have that data. It was about two minutes of the alarm going off. And then another time, on the northern part of the site, we were drilling and the brewery brought out steaming hot hops from the brewing process. And that triggered one of the devices. So those are the only two times those alarms have gone off. The highest readings we've, we've had at the drill rig was fifteen parts per million on a P I D, a photoionization detector, for, you know, thirty seconds, a minute. And that was one of the, one of the locations where there's a monitor well now that we did encounter some petroleum hydrocarbons that were pretty obvious. All those results, just FYI, every boring, as per the work plan, we collected two soil samples, okay? One was biased to the highest reading by, on a P I D. And the other is typically at the water table. Okay, and the water table is somewhere between thirty-five and forty-five feet there. And then we'll collect our groundwater samples. I believe in the work plan, there's two rounds. We have not done that yet because obviously we're not done with all the wells. So that's, that's a summary of where we've been and where we're headed for the next month and a half. So I don't know if anybody has questions, but we're here.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, are all your, how deep are the borings you've been doing so far?
I'll refer to Rachel in the back who did most of the field work. But from memory, I think the deepest was like forty-five to fifty. The shallowest might have been like twenty-five. There you go, eight to forty-three feet. Is that a refusal at eight, Rachel? She said we hit a refusal at eight, which means we hit bedrock, the marble out there. And, you know, you can, if you can envision it in your head, it's a quarry. So the borings are all over the place. Some of them are really deep and some of them are shallow, like that eight footer.
I just wanted to get a range. Now I'm concerned about how many you found at four, how many you did at forty-three feet.
Three, three borings were over forty feet.
What's the rest, I mean, what's the mid-range?
Twenty-five to thirty is the mid-range. We're gonna, we're gonna, we'll have a geologic log for every boring. And we're doing continuous split spoon sampling. So if you're not familiar with that process, it's a two-foot barrel that you pound into the ground in six-inch increments, count the blows, open it up and log the soils. And then we, we log it in accordance with an A S T M standard. And then, you know, they're all, all those logs will be in the remedial investigation report. There'll be cross-sections, there'll be contours and all kinds of information.
First time you report to D C your findings is when you do this, when you described as a fairly comprehensive report in probably about two to three months from now?
Actually, no, excellent question. I forgot to tell everybody, the D C's been out there twice. Once, I met them before the project field work started. And I met the Department of Health and the D C project manager, or managers. And then.
On-site?
On-site. And then when Rachel was out there mid-drilling, maybe after the third or fourth day, the D C was out there for about five hours. Work, you know, over, checking things out, asking us questions, that kind of thing. And we, we report back to the D C on a weekly basis as to what we've accomplished and what we're doing. And then they can come out anytime they want, either entity. And I imagine they'll be out again, probably, I would say maybe two or three more times during the next phases. And we do send them weekly updates. And in those weekly updates, all the community air monitoring data is included in there.
So you're actually doing a report?
That's correct. So we, there's a weekly update and there's a monthly update with all the air monitoring data. So there's, I mean, if you care, there's software that we download to the computer and it plots everything. We check it with our field notes. And then the update report gets sent up to the D C. And, you know, they'll, they'll, they might call, they might call us about those two incidents I just told everybody about. You know, some of the other sites we've had that, they call us, you know, what was that? Can you confirm it, that kind of thing?
Yeah, that was my next question. Based on your weekly and or monthly reports so far, with whatever preliminary data you're giving them, have they responded in response to that specific data?
Nope, they have not yet.
They just happen to appear out of the blue?
Yeah, they'll make unannounced, that, that one day when the gentleman was out there, out there five, five hours, he just was, he said he was in the neighborhood, he just stopped by. And we're, we're fine with it because, you know, we're not hiding anything and that's what their job is, so. And I imagine there might be a couple scheduled visits that they tell us and there might be one or two unannounced as well.
All right, that's real helpful, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Yes, I would add to that, I think the village should get a copy of the weekly reports that you do send to the D C. Should we want to just be aware of them? It'd be helpful, I think, for, you know, information and questions that occasionally do come up.
Okay, so who, who will be our lead? Bill, building inspector?
Yes, Bill Williams.
All right, we'll send him.
If you catch up with those, that'd be great.
No problem, we will send Bill the weekly and monthly updates when we send them to the D C.
Now, does the D C get any kind of schedule as to when you are out there? I mean, they could be stopping by when you're not drilling.
Well, yeah, they'll, we let them know. We give them blocks of time. The gentleman's name is Tony Carwheel, one of the geologists up in Albany. So we'll, we'll tell them, hey, Tony, FYI, we're out there next week, that kind of thing. So they don't waste their time.
Okay, that information as well would be good to have on file with the, with the village with Bill.
So you, so just to him clear, when we're, when we have a block of field work, we're just going to let the village know?
As well, the same information you're telling the D C and also the weekly report.
Yeah, Bill, do you do email? So we'll, we'll, we'll get Bill on email chain and we'll just copy him. So he's privy to the schedule and the updates.
Thank you.
Nope, no problem.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you for the update.
You're welcome.
So that, that's, that's our update. Obviously, we'll take the information, the questions and move.
Okay.
And back to our submission.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this, this time I'd like to give the opportunity to the public to comment on some of the things I've heard this evening. So again, I know there's a lot of you here today. So if we could just do, you know, five to six people, I'm sure, and keep it to about five minutes per person, that would be great. So if anyone would like to come up, this is the opportunity. Come on up. Just identify yourself so we all know who you are.
Good evening, my name is Jerome Griffiths.
Jerome, do you live in the village?
Yeah, I live at Ten Marble Place, which is probably about an eighth of a mile from the hotel. And I do have some concerns and I just want to register them. My first concern is the added traffic. I remember the last time we were here, it came up a bit about Marble Place. Marble Place was never added to the study. And one of my concern is that with the added traffic that going to be generated, people are probably going to be trying to bypass, you know, Main Street, the traffic there on Main Street and be cutting through Marble Place, which is where we live. Just going to add a lot of traffic there, a lot, you know, a lot more, you know, hazard and fumes and whatever that comes with that. So that's one of my concern. The other concern is property value. You know, I want to, want to know if there going to be any kind of study that will try to identify whatever, what impact this hotel might have on residential value in the area. I mean, we pay, paid a lot of money for my house and, you know, if this hotel is going to cause us to lose value, I'd like to know. Maybe it's time to run, I don't know. So that's another one of my concern. And then the other thing is, you know, I didn't know about this, but just by coming here, I heard about the quarry and the, and the issues, the environmental issues that comes with that. So that, that's another concern of mine. I know, you know, the environmental people is addressing it, but I, I do want to, you know, learn as much as I can and to know what, how that will impact.
Sure, you should attend all future meetings.
I will, I will, I will. So those are my concern.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, good evening. My name is Vladimir Zolotov. I'm the owner of Key Martial Arts. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm just here to represent many members of our community and families and students of Key Martial Arts as well, but also other businesses and other members that are not here. We're concerned about the hotel coming and my priority is safety and welfare to everybody in Marble Dell, or Marble Dell Road. We just officially request Mr. Weinberg or the village, if it's possible, to install a safe pedestrian walkway along the one oh nine Marble Dell Road. Because it's unsafe right now. I would like to submit for the records, I have pictures of people walking in the street during the day, around three o'clock or four o'clock or three forty, that they're forced to walk on the street. Okay. Just, the pictures are from November twentieth, two thousand and fourteen.
No, not yet, can you, why don't you put them on a ledge? Yeah, right there, yeah, right. Do we have any magnets, Bill? Is Mr. Williams here? Okay, just, hopefully the two will stay on the bottom. You can hold the other two up if you want.
They're slipping.
That's okay. We don't have any magnets, huh?
So we have several pictures of children and parents walking in the street due to the fact that we don't have a safe passage along the side. And.
Is that, the white car, is that across the street from your, from your, your building?
It's across the street from one oh nine.
Right.
Right. It's on the other side.
Is that, that's when the class is coming out, correct? How many students do you typically teach at one time?
I have classes with ten to fifteen people.
So that represents a ten to fifteen people leaving your class at one time?
Sometimes, so ten, fifteen people leave and then another.
Group comes in.
Group comes in, could be.
Is there, for example, like a ten, fifteen minute?
Yes, it is.
A lag between, so you have an opportunity for people to dissipate?
Yes, yes, it is.
New people to come in, yeah.
Yes, yes, it is.
So what you're capturing there is a peak moment when your class is leaving or class is coming?
Right.
Right. You need a microphone, it's not fair to you.
So the pictures are.
I know the traffic study was saying that the peak time is around five to six.
Yes.
These pictures were taken.
The hotel.
Yeah, yeah, no, but also he's talking about the regular in Tocco, I thought, also matching the public traffic ways. And these pictures are taken around between three twenty and three forty. Also, public school buses are coming by at that time. And there's a lot of trucks going by at that time, which actually you can see. This is a picture of the crosswalk with a woman. I don't know if you can see it, she's trying to carry, she's carrying an infant across and she's being blocked by trucks that are coming through the crosswalk. See, there's a truck here and here's a truck right back, sorry, over here. You can see, the trucks are all in there and they're double parking, they're coming through. And here is a picture, sorry.
Have you spoken to the police department?
Multiple times over the last four years.
Having somebody come out there and just.
We tried, we tried.
This is her trying to cross the street here and see she's waiting as these other, and these are children. These are children coming through.
I see all that, I see what you're referring to.
This has been going on for four years.
Again, I think, to me, this seems like a, a kind of a police issue. I think we should have a police officer out there to just manage the situation. If people are double parking, if people are in areas that they're not supposed to be.
Sure.
That should be policed, to be quite honest with you.
That's very nice. We have made multiple requests to the police commissioner and the police. And the walking situation is actually a one oh nine Marble Dell Road situation, the walking over here with the cars.
When you say one oh nine Marble Dell, is that your building?
No, that's the hotel property, that's Mr. Weinberg's property. That we've been trying for over four years, everything with all village officials. Also, Mr. Weinberg himself, back and forth with the police, with the police chief, with police people. This has been, I can send you documents and documents, just trying to get some public safety.
But we basically try to make Marble Dell Road safe for everybody in the community. My classes start at three forty, but as well known, in the morning to three forty, currently now along the side of one oh nine, they're.
But you also have classes in the morning, don't you?
I have an hour Monday, Wednesday and Friday. And there, my students park all the way to Westies and they walk this way because there are other businesses on Marble Dell Road that are currently parked their cars along the one oh nine. Marble Dell Road that are currently parked their cars, cars along the 109 fence where the property is. And we just try to make, if it's possible, to have a temporary black tarp put away, not a full sidewalk with the concrete or stones or whatever is, how do I call it, illegal and approved by the city, or like a final project. No. We try to find, find a way to put a temporary black tarp before the construction or plan started, so people were not forced to walk on the street, especially. We had an incident the other day that parent, one of my little kids' students, little kids' parents walk with their son along the way on the street, and drivers are passing by, and one of the drivers slowed down, lowered the window, and said, get F-bleep off the road. Now, where are you going off the road? When the snow is on the side, the others are blocked, there's no sidewalk. It, it, it's an issue, so.
Yeah, just so you understand, as part of the approval process, one of the things we'll be asking the applicant is, during construction, he needs to provide a temporary kind of a sidewalk, so that the pedestrians are safe to walk. So that is, that will be part of our approval process.
Okay.
All right, so we'll ask the applicant to provide some sort of a temporary structure, as in any construction site. We just wanna make sure that the, the public has a safe right way.
Right, right. We, we, thank you for that. Our, our concern is now, what they can do now to elevate this issue and not getting into, God forbid, an accident where one of the kids or one of the pedestrians are killed, just because they're forced to run on the street and walk along the street.
Right.
And the other, the other issue that I had currently last week, I was talking Friday, Friday to Mr. Frank DiMarco, the general foreman of the Tuckahoe Village, and he was concerned about the kids, and he asked me to bring this to your attention as well. He had an idea to have that black tarp, that it's not very expensive and-
Mr. DiMarco of the village, CPW?
Yes, yes. And he said, why don't you proceed and ask at the, at the meeting, because it's an inexpensive way and a safe way to provide that, and they can somehow arrange it. I don't know how we do it, but they can, they can arrange it, and they can put it even now before all this is approved.
Yeah, again, I think we can ask the applicant to do that, but-
Right.
We have no power in, in, in forcing him to do it, to be quite honest with you.
Right, right, right.
I mean, he's, he's here, and he's not here this evening, but his representation is this evening. I'm sure they hear you. So again, just to be good neighbors, if there's an opportunity to, to alleviate some of these issues, and if it's inexpensive, I think it would be a great gesture to, you know, to, to provide something for safe passage, that's all I'm saying.
Right. And the last thing that we, I wanna address is, Wednesday I went along the side, and because there was so much garbage, so I have currently pictures at my school.
Yeah, unfortunately, with the snow disappeared, we have garbage everywhere.
Right.
I mean, your block, my block, everybody's block. I mean, this has been a terrible winter. Finally, the snow is disappearing, and we have a lot of cleanup to do, that's for sure.
No, I, I did that last Wednesday, so we just, you can ask the applicant to make sure he provides that cleaning and is not bottled, because what I found, I found meat bowls and bottles of alcohol all over, so.
Yes, I remember they were putting the snow there from the village.
Right, right, right.
So it's actually all of the village's garbage ended up there.
Yeah.
Because they collected the-
Yeah.
Snow and everything they collect inside, you know.
They have an enormous amount of garbage probably because of that.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? You had your chance already. All right, come on.
I was helping him.
I don't know, it didn't seem like you were helping him. It seemed like you had your own speech going.
It's like I was helping him, well, I should've been helping him.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so these are the potential adverse impacts that need to be evaluated in the environment.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, sorry. Rachel Zolotov, also Key Martial Arts. These are the potential adverse impacts that need to be evaluated in the environmental impact study. First of all, the financial benefits of the proposed hotel versus the financial cost of the increased municipal services that will be required because of the hotel, such as fire, emergency service, police, and utilities. Also, in the traffic report impact study, we'd like to have included the construction impact on all access to all Marble Dell Road businesses, entities, establishments. Also, the construction impact on parking and customer access to all Marble Dell Road commercial establishments. In addition, we also would like to, in the environmental impact study, is there really a need for this hotel? There are two new hotels under construction within three miles of the site. One is a hundred and fifty-room Hampton Suites Hotel at fifty-five Tuckahoe Road in Yonkers, right near the spring entrance. The project broke ground in January thirteenth, two thousand and five. The second is a one, a hundred and fifty-five-room Hyatt Place in the Cross County Shopping Center, which is two point seven miles away, and will be opening in the spring of two thousand and fifteen. In addition, there are four new, there are four hotels within five miles in addition to those two, and six hotels in addition within seven miles. Also, on the master plan of Tuckahoe, there are contradictions and questions that we'd like to ask concerning the village of Tuckahoe's comprehensive and master plan. In two thousand and seven, the village of Tuckahoe adopted the village comprehensive and master plan. The purpose of the comprehensive plan, as stated in the plan, is to guide policy and land use decisions in the village of Tuckahoe over the next ten years. The hotel project contradicts the first goal of the master plan. On page forty-five, the plan goals state, goal one, preserve neighborhood quality, maintain the scale and small village feel in the neighborhoods. The current hotel height, size, and proportion are not in keeping with the current scale of the area, nor in the master plan's recommendations. Also, number two of the master plan, bringing us back to sidewalks. The master plan encourages sidewalks, a pedestrian system, and a pedestrian atmosphere. Goal two, maintain a green Tuckahoe, enhance local streets and sidewalks, support a pedestrian system. Goal four, enhance a pedestrian atmosphere. Goal three, enhance Marble Dell Road as a general business area. Wouldn't that mean to put in sidewalks? Now, as we stated before, we've been going on with this for four years, there's a straight shot in front of 109. It'll make it so much safer. Please, let's see what we can do as a community. In addition, there were some zoning irregularities in the variances, in the zoning meeting that was passed. There was a SEQR segmentation violation. There were zoning changes that are approved before the Marriott Spring Hill Suites project, for the Marriott Spring Hill Suites project, before the environmental impact study was submitted. This is considered a SEQR segmentation violation. The SEQR law was broken. And at least one residence who property adjoins the site was never notified of the zoning meetings. She never, she and her husband never received any written notification, and only found out about the zoning changes by word of mouth over two months later. That is another zoning violation, right? The zoning, the zoning variances for the hotel project, as you know, was for a two to five stories, and also zoning change setbacks. So this should be looked into, because why would there be zoning variances approved, and this is going contrary to the law? In addition, of course, the big question is, what is the benefit of the hotel project weighed against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood and the community? Now, as far as the traffic study that was just brought up, we'd like to know in the community how we get a copy of the study. In addition, we wanted also, when we talked about public parking, the current plan for the hotel eliminates two to four public street parking spaces. And I know that there was a big discussion on parking, making the blacktop of that area less, to bring in less parking, but we would like to know if public parking is going to be compensated in that area, because already, you know, it is very, very tight for us, and especially since there isn't a safe walkway. If there was a safe walkway, people could further down and perhaps safely walk up. But we'd like to make sure that the hotel is not taking anything away from what we currently have. Also, we'd like to know about the traffic study, if they're, if they looked into putting a stop sign anywhere near the current crosswalk or the intersection of Jackson Avenue. That is a big strip going on Marble Dell Road, as we all know, it's used as a thoroughfare, and the traffic is whipping past. As you can see from the pictures, it's very dangerous. And has anything been addressed as far as public safety, the requests have been in? And in the traffic study, I don't know if anything has been proposed with an increased traffic of the hotel, or even before that, of the construction of getting a stop sign. We would recommend a stop sign as opposed to a traffic light, because we're afraid that when the yellow light goes, that they're gonna just gun through, and we wouldn't want that. And also, has there been anything looked at with the traffic and the, and with the parking as far as pedestrian access? There's that one crosswalk, which you could see gets pretty commonly blocked by traffic going on, but anything to enhance it, because that would impact the whole area and make it safer. Thank you. I hope I went fast enough, so somebody else can speak.
All right. Anybody else want to, yes?
My only comment is-
Identify yourself, please.
Rich Gersberg, I'm on one thirty-four Marble Dell Road. Just trying to understand the project. I don't know if that's the case or not, but if there is two or four spots removed from Marble Dell Road during the construction, we need them. I have a business there, a growing business. Parking is very tight on the street, and I wanna make sure that we don't lose parking. And my concern is, if the hotel or restaurant people start parking on the street, it might affect my employees, who already, as is, it's difficult to find parking. So I wanna make sure that it's taken into account during construction and after construction.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes? Hi.
Hi, my name is Noelia Ramirez. I'm here with my son Sebastian.
Hi.
So we're gonna echo what the previous speakers were talking about, safety. Parking and safety, it is critical, so please, anything you guys can do, because we are very concerned.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Kurt Engerman, I'm a professor at Iona College.
Hi.
And I live in Chapico. I'm not from here.
Okay.
But three of my family members are members of the Martial Arts Academy.
Okay.
And I listen very carefully to the testimony of the geologist, who was well-spoken. And I just have a couple of questions. Maybe he can answer those questions for us. First question is, I was very happy to hear that you're going to put a meter next to the building. At the last hearing, they said it was gonna be one meter at the far end of the perimeter, and one next to the drilling site, but now there's, is that going to be next to the Martial Arts Academy? From the way you demonstrated, it was in a western portion?
Yeah, again, it's Bill Cannavan, Hydro Environmental Solutions. The meters are gonna be moved around the site in accordance with where we're drilling, but the remainder of the work is mostly on the southern side of the site. So there will be the two down wind, one upwind, and one near the buildings. Will it be directly in front of the karate studio, the martial arts studio? Depends on where we're drilling, but in that direction, between the drilling operation and the buildings, there'll be a monitoring station.
So when you drill, you're taking basically some meters with you at the drill sites? And you keep, you have two stationary meters at the southern end?
We have four, four stationary meters-
Right.
-that are set up in accordance with the approved air monitoring plan. There'll always be one between the drill rig and the drilling operations and the buildings. There'll always be two downwind ones, and there'll always be one upwind one.
Okay.
My question is, what happens when the meter goes off?
If the meter goes off, then it's, it's a set of operations that occurs. Well, let's give you an example. Let's say there's too much dust in the air, whether we're drilling or trucks coming onto the site. If the meter goes off, then dust suppression activities have to occur, which would be, you know, wetting the area, making sure there's no dust. The meter, the meter doesn't register dust, then the work can be completed. If it's something serious, just as another example, if we hit a twenty-five percent of the lower explosive limit while we're drilling, we shut, we shut the job down, figure out why we're hitting that twenty-five percent of the LEL, and then, until it's safe, nothing happens, basically. That's, and that, if anyone wants to read it, that's all in the site-specific health and safety plan, which is in the remedial investigation work plan, and in the community air monitoring plan. All those steps and how we deal with something like that is in there.
Are there any conditions under which it would be impossible to continue the project?
I guess there would be. I've been doing this twenty-seven years. It's never happened. We've temporarily shut down a project, maybe because of dust, or, or maybe depending on what site you're drilling on, you hit methane or something, but permanently shut down would be, I would say, no, would be unlikely.
Last question I have. Is the excavation going to take place only where the buildings are, or is the entire quarry going to be?
I don't, I don't think they know that yet, and that's part of his analysis. Once we determine exactly what's in the property, then they'll determine the method required to, for the building, you know. So I think it's a little too early to, to establish what you're gonna be doing.
It is. So just to reiterate quickly, we'll do the investigation. We'll put all the data together. We'll interpret the data. Based on the proposed development, we will then come up with a remedial action plan. It might be some excavation. It might be some capping. It might be a deed notice. It could be any number of things based on the findings. That'll go to the DEC and the Department of Health. It's gonna be very unlikely they're gonna approve anything we submit the first time through, so there might be multiple revisions. Then once it's an approved remedial action work plan, goes on public record. You have the public comment period, and then it gets implemented.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Last chance. Going, going? Gone. Okay, well-
Last chance tonight. They have plenty more on.
Last chance tonight, correct? Yes, let me rephrase that. Okay, so at this point, we have no other business, so I make a motion to close the public hearing. Let's all close the, end the meeting. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Happy, happy Thanksgiving. Oh, my God. St. Patrick's Day. Good night, everybody.